Jeff Griffin, Bill Wantland.
Here.
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Gary Houck.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Terry Thomason.
Here.
Susan Hammond.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Wantland.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Gary Houck.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Motion passes.
There be no further business as there are motion to adjourn. I move.
Second.
All the favor say aye.
Aye.
So ordered. Next is the Seminole Gas Authority. Call to order. Roll call.
John Kramer.
Here.
Susan Hammond.
Here.
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Bill Wantland.
Here.
Jeff Griffin, Gary Houck.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Terry Thomason.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Gary Houck.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the gas authority? Not, then a motion to adjourn will be in order.
She'll move.
Second.
All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. That brings us to the Seminole Utilities Authority. Call to order. Roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Gary Houck.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Terry Thomason.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Bill Wantland.
Here.
Jeff Griffin, Susan Hammond.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Gary Houck.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Utilities Authority? If not, then we go to Resolution Number One. Consideration possible action to approve Resolution SUA 2014-01. A resolution amending the fiscal year 2013-14 budget and transferring and appropriating funds of $5,200 between the operating departments within the water sewer fund. This is just cleanup, getting ready for our auditor to get in and get our books audited. I'd just say that Jay did an excellent job getting it this close.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Gary Houck.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number two, consideration possible action to approve Resolution SUA 2014-02. A resolution amending the fiscal year 2013-14 Water Sewer Fund and Water Sewer Fund Capital Improvement Budgets and transferring and appropriating additional operating funds of $55,000 from the Water Sewer Fund to the Water Sewer CIP for fiscal year 2013-14.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Gary Houck.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is there a motion then to adjourn?
She'll move.
Second.
All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. That brings us to the Seminole City Council meeting. Call to order. Roll call, Jay.
Terry Thomason.
Here.
Susan Hammond.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Bill Wantland.
Here.
Gary Houck.
Here.
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Jeff Griffin, Chris Anson.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Oh God, whose mercies cannot be numbered except our prayer of thanks for the city of Seminole and for all our people. Let us love one another for you, God, our love. Amen. Under elections and appointments, Urban Renewal Authority, Claudia Willis to fill the position vacated by Ron Monelmoog through July the 31st, 2015.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Gary Houck.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And secondly, for the Urban Renewal Authority, reappointing Richard Parks through July 2017.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Gary Houck.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Planning Commission, number one, to reappoint Mark Shell through June 2017.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Gary Houck.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And reappoint Chuck Chaddick through June 2017.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Gary Houck.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the City Council?
I'm Scott Staley.
If you'll come up, Mr. Staley, to hear and reintroduce yourself so the microphone can pick you up.
My name's Scott Staley, and the reason I came tonight is because we were, the Family Dollar store that's proposed to build at the corner of Struthers and Mill Phillips, we had some concerns over that new structure and the location, and we were at, we asked, we notified of the planning commission meeting that was held last week, and the person that was supposed to notify us forgot, the city employee forgot to notify the citizens, residents around there. So we were not able to, or we didn't know about the meeting, and we had some concerns that we wanted to voice, and so I just now got a copy of the minutes of that meeting, and it looks like Doug George from the engineer for Family Dollar that's going to build the building, Pam Robinson, Ernie Willis, all of these people were there but didn't get to hear our concerns. So we came tonight to see if that possibly we might be able to voice our concerns, or possibly even have the planning commission reconvene and at least listen to us.
What are your concerns?
There's a few. Location of the new congestion in that intersection is one. The parking issue has been resolved according to the new drawing that the engineers come up with. There's a property line issue on the west side of the property. There's two different surveys that don't match where the property line's supposed to be. The alley, the east and west alley, is it vacated? Is it not vacated? I've got some documentation here that vacates part of the alley from Park Street to Mill Phillips. I think some of the other citizens, the residents, neighbors there, had some concerns over the parking and the congestion mostly, and the safety of the other people in Seminole or people passing through on 377. Access to that new business, and I mean, there's just different things that we wanted to propose or present, and we didn't get the opportunity to.
So can we, can we have another meeting to allow them the opportunity? Do you present this to the planning commission?
Be up to the planning commission.
You can remand it back to them, and it'd be up to them to do it.
But we don't have an agenda item. Do we have an agenda item here today on this one? We don't have an agenda item. I think the council can probably direct the planning commission or remand it back to the planning commission for reconsideration if there's an agenda item. Now, let me, in all fairness to Sharon and Steve, I was advised of this today, and just so that the record's clear, the notice was given, it was published, and published, it was published in the paper and posted like it's supposed to do. I think there was some, there was some confusion about whether or not there was going to be some phone calls or written correspondence or sent to the property owners, which is not required under the ordinances or under the statutes. And I don't want to get into specifics of it, other than, I mean, in all fairness, we need to make sure that the council's informed. There was a board of adjustment meeting, or I understand, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm just, I'm just kind of new to it, where the developer had requested that a variance be issued to reduce the number of parking spaces on that particular site. Pursuant to the city ordinances, each owner, property owner within 300 feet was notified in writing, and the agenda was posted, and it was published in the paper. The board met, property owners, some property owners appeared, voiced their concerns about those particular issues, or maybe other issues, I wasn't there. And then the board of adjustment basically tabled their decision, I believe, to the next one, right, Scott?
The first meeting was tabled, and the second one was denied.
Right. And then later on, they denied the developer's request for the variance, so at that point it became moot. So with nothing to resolve, it basically moved forward on the regular planning commission agenda for site approval and I guess issuance of a building permit. I believe that's what it was, to make sure that all the specifics had been met. That particular meeting, which was a regular scheduled planning commission meeting, was posted and published. Now, where we get into it here, the owners of the property, this is the planning commission now, they're not required to be notified of that because there was no zoning change or anything of that nature. This was just a property owner or developer coming in the, just the regular course of business to make sure that all those i's were dotted and t's were crossed. And I think this is what Scott's talking about as far as not being notified, I guess, in writing, was his grievance or telephoned or something.
That, I understand the public notice and how that works, but at that last meeting, we asked Sharon, the other neighbors did, we asked, and she agreed. She said she wouldn't let us know when the planning commission meeting was coming around. I, thank you.
Yeah, we talked before the meeting.
I don't read the paper. I live here, I've been here all my life. I only read the paper if somebody gives it to me and says, hey, read this. Your neighbor's in the paper, you know, but...
Have Rose read it to you?
Yeah. And so I just, I relied on that notification because that's, that's why. And I think at least one of the other two neighbors has the same sentiments.
Yeah. Well, obviously, there was an oversight, if that, if that is in fact what happened. I think part of it was, I don't think, once the board of adjustment said, no, you're not able to do it without the proper number of parking spaces, we'd been led to believe all along that if they didn't get that passed, then Family Dollar would back away and not build there. So I think there was a lapse of time between the time you said, hey, if this comes up, give us a call, when it actually came through, and in fact, Family Dollar had decided to make the parking spaces available. I don't know if they ended up downsizing or what, but that was somewhat of a surprise to staff, so...
Well, I will say this, that last meeting, at the end of that last meeting, Doug George asked the board for a, he said, if I can make it work, and I can get the parking spaces that you all require, would you reconsider? And they said yes, and that's where it was left. So I, I didn't assume. I knew that that would probably happen, because that was their goal, was to build the store there. And trust me, I'm all about having a new business, or a business relocate here in town to better their traffic, and that's a great place. It's just, I didn't think it was fair that all of a sudden we get notified of this, of the parking issue, and we're allowed to come to that meeting, and we kind of get a little taste of what's going on. We get this thing going, that they're probably going to make concessions, move the building, whatever they have to do to get the parking spaces. And at that point, we feel like, my neighbors feel like, and myself, that we're involved now, and we're going to get to participate, at least voice our concerns. I know what's going to happen. I know it's going to be built. But we want to have some input and make sure that where it's at is going to be a safe place, the method of parking and traffic and that intersection's going to be safe for my family and yours. I don't want people parking in my driveway when it gets full around on Park Street. I don't think these guys do either. So that was, I felt like that was something that we should have been able to participate in at that planning commission meeting. And we relied on Sharon to let us know when that meeting was going to be.
Okay. A couple of things I would say from the staff perspective is, number one, everything was complied with. I think Brad alluded to that fact. We are confident that no matter what the planning commission does going forward, that the property owner has some rights as well. They have the right, if it's zoned properly, to build a commercial deal. However, we take pride as a staff, and I know the council does, in the transparency that we offer. So in abundance of effort and caution, I don't see any problem with remanding it back to the planning commission for another meeting. They may be a little frustrated with us as a staff, but I would rather be called on the carpet and whipped a little bit than for the citizens not to have been heard. That's...
One of the, and I'm not sure that, I think the council can just, you know, this is just under appearances and petitions from the audience, so, you know, with that, I mean, I think the council could make, you know, the proper statement that they'd like the planning commission to revisit it. But one thing that I want to make sure of is this. If we set a precedent that every time we have to notify a property owner, there are so many agenda items that are on, in front of the planning commission on a monthly basis whenever they meet, it's impossible to meet that requirement. I mean, if you set that precedent, then going forward, when somebody doesn't get noticed, then it puts us in a, in a situation. That's why we have the posting notices and the publications, and we're not even required to publish regularly scheduled meetings. You do, you do have to have special meetings, but regular scheduled meetings are required, the postings of the agenda in the, for the required time at public places, city hall, library, where we choose to do it, where we regularly do it. So I just want to make that clear, that from my, from my standpoint, just as part of the staff, we got to be careful doing this, is all I'm saying.
I understand what you're saying, Brad, and I think it'd be very clear that there is no statutory or ordinance requirement that notice be given other than was given. But in this particular case, there was to be a personal notice, and through oversight that didn't get done, so this is not setting a precedent.
Right.
But the city manager has made a recommendation, and...
Which I agree with too, by the way.
And I would accept a motion to that effect.
She'll move.
Second.
Roll call.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes, we mustn't forget who we serve.
Can we just let the mayor do that? Can we take a vote on that, since it's not on the agenda?
You know, it's appearance in, you know...
It is an agenda item.
I think it's, I think that it's under a proper agenda item, but I don't really see an issue with it since it's, it's been brought up before the council. It's just, and there's no action other than we're asking the planning commission to revisit the issue.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, you're talking too much.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Gary Houck.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you.
Are there any other appearances or petitions from the audience? Well, that bring us then to bids. Number one, consideration and possible action to approve the sole bid of $17,500 from Hare's Construction for renovation of both restrooms in the Seminole Public Library to be funded from the General Fund CIP, budgeted item for the fiscal year 2014-15.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Absolutely.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Gary Houck.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Applause would be appreciated at this point for what needed to be done. Number two, consideration and possible action to approve the state contract bid price of $82,264.98 from OCT Equipment LLC for a Case 580 SN Loader Backhoe for the Water Department to be funded from Series 2010 bond proceeds. This is a budget item for fiscal year 2014-15.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Gary Houck.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number three, consideration and possible action to approve acceptance of the proposal from Silver Star Construction for the contracting of public works projects for the city of Seminole to include the Seminole Economic Development Council for work to be performed on as needed basis. This is sort of continuation of what we've done in the past, is it not? Yes, sir.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
There you go. Roll call.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Gary Houck.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number four, consideration and possible action to approve the state contract bid price of $18,732 for the purchase of three zero-turn lawnmowers from SI Tractor Sales as follows. Water Department Bad Boy CZT Elite $5,449. Wastewater Plant Bad Boy CZT Elite $5,449. Sportsman's Lake Bad Boy Outlaw XP $7,844. Budgeted funding for the mowers in the Water Sewer CIP is $16,000, with the additional $2,732 to be funded from the department's operational budgets.
Could you repeat that?
How long will these last? How long will these last? Do we know? I mean, just a guesstimate.
Yeah, three to five, depending on the weather. Of course, if we get a rainy season, then they're going to be used more. The more hours you put on the engine and the decks, the more frequently we're going to have to replace them.
Do they keep maintenance records on these mowers?
That's a loaded question, so I'm kind of nodding my head. You know something that...
Well, I'm just wondering if they're keeping, if it has to be taken into the shop, if they're keeping track of what they have to do to it. If they're having problems with the engines, if they have problems with the decks, the blades, the spindles, if it's, or if they're just going off of the number of hours that's on the hour meter. No, they keep up to follow that. Have the mowers that these are replacing, have they been having a lot of maintenance problems? These mowers they're replacing are residential type of mowers, Murray's, Donner, cheaper brand, and we've had them for five years.
Okay.
These are called commercial mowers.
But they're not the high-dollar grasshoppers either. These are going to be lesser, little, little bit lighter duty than the grasshoppers that we... Are you wanting one at the airport? Is that where we're going with this?
No.
Okay.
I don't go there no more.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Gary Houck.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number five, consideration and possible action to approve the staff recommendation as the best bid of a Genie GS 1930 scissor lift and trailer from Pioneer Rental at a cost of $6,700 for building maintenance use to be funded from the General Fund CIP.
And this is like a used one, or is it new?
Sharon?
It's used.
Okay.
It's used. So has it been looked over to make sure that it's in good shape and...
It is. The company that we bought, we would like to purchase it from is Hertz out of Shawnee, and they're actually a Genie dealer. They go through, they recondition it, they put it out either for rental or for sale, and that's what we'd like to do, is just to buy it.
And it's mainly to be used where?
Anywhere we can't get to something with a ladder.
Like the lights and changing lights out and all that kind of stuff?
The lights, ceilings, anything.
What kind of guarantee do they give on that deal?
I, I think it's old enough that there's not really a warranty on it, but they, this, this is the company that sells parts, and the other one that $6,000, it was, it's a "Made in China." We don't know where parts are going to come from.
I move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Terry Thomason.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Gary Houck.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinances. Number six, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number 1167, an ordinance adding a section on social host, social hosting to Title 10, offenses and crimes are requirement for qualifying for the highest level healthy communities incentive grant.
And you say this is state law already anyway?
Yes, social hosting is a state law.
Can I ask a question? Why do we have to pass this if it's already state law?
To get the points for the grant money.
I know, but if it's already a law...
The grant people have to do something to look like they're earning their living.
No.
Because they already have an ordinance that takes it. We had to pass it last year for that.
We can prosecute any misdemeanor in our...
I move to approve.
Municipality. We'll just make it a city code, I guess.
Second.
Roll call.
Terry Thomason?
Yes.
Susan Hammond?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Gary Howt?
Yeah.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolutions. Number seven, consideration and possible action to approve resolution number 2014-10, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2013-14 budget and transfer and appropriating funds of $63,250 between operating departments within the general fund.
Some more cleanup, huh?
For the accountants.
What departments are we talking about?
There's a whole list of them, and I will say that we were under, that's the amount we're under budget by, so we can transfer between departments, so we're actually in pretty good shape.
Good.
Under budget.
Under budget.
Some are under and some are over.
Some are over, correct. Some are is over.
Is there a motion?
Still move.
Second. I'll check.
Roll call. Terry Thomason?
Yes.
Susan Hammond?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Gary Howt?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number eight, consideration and possible action to approve resolution number 2014-11, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2013-14 general fund and general fund capital improvement budgets and transferring and appropriating additional operating funds of $100,000 from the general fund to the CIP for fiscal year 2013-14.
That's for a total of $125,000 for the year.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Terry Thomason?
Yes.
Susan Hammond?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Gary Howt?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number nine, consideration and possible action to approve resolution number 2014-12, a resolution dedicating long-term camping fees at Sportsman's Lake solely to lake improvements.
This is just the long term? Is that right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
How much are we talking about there, do you know? In the past year?
Yeah, if I recall, it was $12,000 something last year, do you remember? Mike, do you remember?
It's about right. There's about $6,600 in there right now.
Yeah.
Most generally, that's where the leg gets their funding.
Yeah, we've done this in the past. This is not a real swift step.
Instead of us funding it through the general fund. Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Terry Thomason?
Yes.
Susan Hammond?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Gary Howt?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number 10, consideration and possible action to approve resolution number 2014-13, a resolution declaring September is farmer's market month.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Terry Thomason?
Yes.
Susan Hammond?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Gary Howt?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under current business, number 11, consideration and possible action to approve the contract for two fiscal years from 2014 through 2016 with Lodge 138 Seminole Fraternal Order of Police, fiscal years 2014-16, including one, changing Section 1, Article 20 to 50,000 in employee life insurance coverage from 25,000, and Section 2, Article 27, granting a 3% pay increase for each fiscal year 2014-15 and fiscal year 2015-16.
Move to approve.
These are all the things we discussed before.
That's correct. This is the result of our negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Roll call.
Terry Thomason?
Yes.
Susan Hammond?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Gary Howt?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And then there's an addendum, under current business, item 12, consideration and possible action to approve the electrical easement with OG&E. I believe that's in your packet.
Mike, what exactly is the easement and where is it at?
Decently removed.
Okay.
For new service to the Christmas sites.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Terry Thomason?
Yes.
Susan Hammond?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Gary Howt?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And that brings us into reports. City manager?
Yes, we, if you're like me in my neighborhood, you've seen one or two mosquitoes. We have begun the mosquito spraying, but it is dependent upon the wind. We're trying to wait till late evening and most often after 10:00 PM to really get the best effect from our spraying activities, but we have started our second or third volley this week. The, the swimming pool at this point, and especially the splash pad, I'm going to classify it as lifeguard challenged. We're having difficulty staffing those positions. As we get closer to school starting, it becomes more and more difficult for us to field a full team and make it safe. So we're, we're trying to do our best on the swimming pool. Of course, the splash pad is kind of a self, you, you can do it on your own, of course, but we've tried, at least for the last month or so, to keep someone down there to keep the older, older people off of the slide. That's, that's been a wild deal, but we need to have someone down there watching over them. I don't, we don't have a real date to shut down the splash pad. Usually when we see the usage drop, we'll, we'll try to get it shut down, but if you have any questions about that, feel free to give me a call at the office and we'll, we'll go over it. But I don't look for the swimming pool to stay open much past. Do you have any ideas next week or trying to get through Labor Day?
We have private parties scheduled through the 31st. They're fully staffed, but we have, I don't know if we have those back to keep it open. Trying.
If you have any ideas or leads on a lifeguard, we'd love to have those. The Snowman Wonderland fundraiser last Saturday evening was a big success. It looks as though they're gonna have some pretty good money heading into the holiday festival of lights that we have here in Seminole around the holiday season. I think they raised in the neighborhood of $12,000. Congratulations on, on all those that put in the hard work to do that. I want to point out, you, you may read in the, in the newspaper that our sales tax is up. We are cautiously optimistic that it will continue. Jay, check me on the numbers, I think we're $45,000 last month, and then it was reported that we had $92,000 increase this month. That's significant. I spent most of the day trying to ascertain what may have happened to cause that.